Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this study session of the Tacoma School Board, March 27, 2020. And I believe this is the first one we've ever done virtually, so viewing audience, please bear with us. I appreciate the technical expertise from our IT media department to make this happen and Tanya BD for pulling all of this together. It is unusual times. The social distance protocol, when you look at the data appears to be working and the Tacoma Public School District is trying to be modeling that good, appropriate behavior. This afternoon, the school board has asked the superintendent to provide us with an update on the changing OSPI guidance and what the plan is going forward to educate students in Tacoma and to also provide us with an update on the TPS Meals on Wheels program, as well as the day camp and any other pertinent information. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Santoro.
Hi, my heart is racing because for a while I thought I wasn't going to get on here. Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to update you on our actions since this school closure and you're right, Director Heinz, it certainly has been unprecedented times. So, we're going to do exactly what you talked about, which is make sure we, you know, give you information about what we think are the three major follow-ups that we have done, actions that we've taken around the COVID-19 response. We want to reiterate and start with the fact that our, our actions have been totally relying on the guidance that we're getting from, first of all, the Pierce County Health Department and Dr. Chen, who's been vital and given us information, our superintendent of, our superintendent, our state superintendent, school superintendent, Chris Reichdahl, and of course, the announcements from the governor. And so, our work has been designated to follow their guidance. And as we know, of course, this whole activity has been fluid and the direction has changed necessarily as we go through, but we've had to, you know, to adjust and we feel like we've done that. So, the purpose of today is to do number one, to talk to you really about how student learning is changing in light of our OSPI guidance and to give you an update on the district's compliance with implementation of daycare for children of healthcare workers and first responders, and then also give you an update on the district's food delivery. So, those are the things that we'll be doing. So, let's start with learning for students. So, we, one of the things I want the public to know and I want the board to know, and I think the board knows because we talked to you right away, we tried to keep you informed, but that we immediately responded with learning resources as soon as we knew that we were going to have a closure until April, at least April 24th. And so, immediately, Marie Verhar and her team have been working to get resources up on our website and also started to work to get packets. I wish I could come up with a better word for that, but these instructional learning guidelines that could help, that could help teachers. They were aligned with the state standards. They were prepped and put out for every grade level and they were designed to provide relevant learning opportunities. And what I mean by that is that there were activities that were aligned to standards per grade level and we had a packet for kindergarten through 12th grade. And then we put them in two forms, one that you could download, download them from the internet, or you could actually go to a distribution site and get those. Now, our initial guidance was that the superintendent wanted us to provide learning, you know, learning activities, but we weren't to claim at all that they were the same as the instruction that you'd get with a teacher. I think that probably is understandable that it's not going to be, you know, that same kind of quality that we get from our, our educational professionals and that our message that was on our webpage was decide, was designed to comply with that advice, that we knew that this wasn't the same as classroom instruction. I think the message was, got a little misinterpreted as that we were doing nothing, you know, and that was a mistake. We, I wish that I had worded it differently, but that is not true. These packets and resources were designed to provide our students with relevant activities. They were high quality and they were designed to be, have our students engaged in activity that would give them practice in some of the standards for their grade level. And many districts have asked us for our, for our materials or have inquired about our materials. So, I just want to make it really clear that the, we, the packets were designed to take for the first two weeks and now we have just finished the second two weeks worth of materials that we know that we can get out. They've been highly requested. They've asked, our, our parents have asked for wider distribution. Right now, they are distributed at the same sites where our meals are being served and some of our parents have asked for us to, to get them, to get them out to a, you know, a wider, a wider audience, a way that they can go without maybe even pick them at the distribution site. So, we're, we're thinking about that, trying to figure out what's a better way to get those packets out as we go to a new, a new group of instructional materials that will carry us through the next two weeks. And if it ends up that we need a longer time period for our, you know, for this kind of supplementary but relevant instruction, then our teams are ready to go ahead and look at the next two weeks. So, the other thing then, then we did get further guidance that said that the state superintendent said, hey, we really want this guidance to change. We want to elevate this to a teacher-directed instruction and not just activities. And we responded right away to that. Number one, it's important that I say that several teachers have already started that kind of direct contact and were, you know, working with their students if they had the means or a previous structure that they could do that. It's a, the instruction we know can, will be, can be aligned with the packet activities. And I don't mean that it'll be the same or based on it, but that again, remember that the instructional packets that were put together by our Learning and Teaching Department were aligned with the standards. So, this is an opportunity and our teachers have responded so well. This is an opportunity for them to connect directly with their students and to give them an opportunity to say, how you doing? They're going to be, you know, doing some very direct instruction and this is an opportunity for teachers to meet with students. And our guidance from the state superintendent is to start on March 30th. We spent the last few days meeting with every principal group to make sure that we're all on the same page and we know what we want our teachers to do. Our relationship, we've talked, we've talked with Angel Morton, our TEA president, and have been so excited about the partnership that we, that we have worked with them to make sure that teachers are on board and ready to go. We want this to be flexible. We're not saying, hey, on day one, you better do this or else. It's not that kind of guidance. It's connect with your students, give them relevant assignments. You know, at our secondary schools, of course, you know, we don't want three hours, three hours of work from every teacher because that would bury our youngsters. So, we want them to get thoughtful, considerate, helpful, relevant work. And we think we're in, we're, we're in an excellent position to formally, formally to initiate this next step. And Marie, the way we're handling it is that Marie and company have put together these learning frameworks, one for elementary, one for middle school, and one for high school. And they're going to be designed to support our students. Josh is going to talk to you specifically. Deputy Superintendent Garcia is going to talk to you about our frameworks and then he's going to outline the work in day camps. He has gotten all of our partners together to work. And then I'm going to finish up with our work about how we've gone through nutrition. So, thank you very much. And I turn it over to Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you Superintendent Santoro. I think Superintendent did a great job of talking about our journey. A few quick reminders. We are in our second week of school closure. We were asked by the governor and the state superintendent to take that first week and in their words, describe it as a spring break. Let us all have a chance to make meaning of this. This is unprecedented times. During that time, as Carla mentioned, we, we did a lot of work to try to create resources and learning activities and to address what, what the changing tides were looking like. The new message and guidance from OSPI is, is to have us become more engaged in that process, as the superintendent mentioned. So, starting Sunday night, families will be getting a phone call from their principal, talking about a new schedule of communication that is coming from the school and the classroom teacher. Every week, classroom teachers, now they could work in collaboration with grade level teams, content teams, will create two, one to two, sometimes two to three hours of learning activities for the next five days. These will be locally designed by the classroom teacher, their grade level team. They will not be district designed. The district work is to support ongoing learning, but this is really the opportunity for the classroom teacher to design something that is explicitly linked to one of the prioritization standards so that they have a connection to what is actually going on in their classroom because they know their kids best. They will outline opportunities for kids to receive feedback and assess their learning. That does not necessarily mean a test. So, feedback and assessment will come based off of what the teacher designs is, and deemed relevant to the activities that are there. What does that look like at a secondary level? A student may get an email on Monday from their first period teacher for the learning over the next five days and then on Tuesday from a second period teacher, all the way through the week, Wednesday, third period, so on and so on. They may get it at a middle school. They may have it come from their English Language Arts teachers on one day, math another, social studies another. And in elementary, they may have multiple options and their classroom teacher and their principal will communicate this schedule to them so they know how it happens on a consistent basis. They may get one email because they have one homeroom teacher on Monday, or they may get activities through the week. And that'll be up to the teacher to decide, but there'll be some consistency. This cycle will repeat every week between now and April 24th unless new guidance comes out. The learning activities will also be posted to the website. We know that digital access is sometimes a barrier for families. So, families will get communication in three different ways. One, the phone call that announces the new learnings are coming up every week from their principal. Two, it'll be posted to the website. Three, they will also get email communications. And then we, as Superintendent mentioned, we are looking at different ways to expand in case a family needs hard copy opportunities as well. None of the work will be graded for a grade, but the students will be expected to turn in work and will get feedback to keep on advancing their learning. I'm going to pause there. Are there any questions?
Vice President Cobb, do you have any questions?
Um, no, but I, well, no, I just want to comment though, just I want to thank you and the team, Carla, for the work that you all have done now. And I'm not sure what the forum will be in terms of another opportunity to comment, so I'll just say it now. Something that I've been thinking a lot about is just the way that parents and adult family members have really stepped up in this time to provide students with opportunities to stay engaged. So, the message that I think I want to send is that as the resources from the district roll out, parents, they'll feel free to keep filling in, like engaging your kids, how you know best they want to be engaged, whether it's thinking about music as an opportunity, thinking about teaching math and playing cards, whatever it is that you've been doing, please just think about your efforts as complementary to what is about to roll out from the district. But generally, just thanks for the rapid work.
Thank you. Director Bondright, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, yes. I, first of all, I again also want to thank the superintendent, deputy superintendent and the team at District Office for, you know, guiding us through this and for all the hard work, you know, behind the scenes and out that the public has seen. And thanks for the clarification on what's already happened. I think some of those details did get lost in the shuffle and, and so thank you for, for clarifying. Also want to say thank you to the teachers that are out there and the principals that are, have been working since, every day since they, since this closed shutdown and trying to develop processes for the kids. I wanted, I'm sure that this is the case, but I just wanted some clarification in when we're talking about communicating out to families. We do have some language barriers and I want to make sure that, I know right now the packets are in multiple languages, available in multiple languages, but I want to make sure that there were guaranteed that, that if we're reaching out to parents via email that, and the parents can't, you know, are not literate in English, that there's some way to make sure that those parents are still engaged in the learning of their kids. Not sure who can answer that, but.
So, we are working on some translation supports, but there are limitations and we will recognize and what has been clear with OSPI's guidance is, is we can't replicate the magic that happens on a daily basis inside of a school. And so, we are, and I'll keep on reminding us, is we're still young in this journey. We're going to get better. And so, the ELL team, I have some meetings this afternoon, is processing different kinds of supports. ELL teachers are still processing these supports, classroom teachers. So, we're going to ask for a little patience for everybody. Even some ideas that we've even heard from families to say, hey, really appreciate this, but please understand that some families are in crisis right now. They, they have a lot going on and they don't want their children to be left behind. And so, they're asking for patience as well and they're, what, what are we expecting in return from their child's learning? So, we're all trying to figure this out in the new norm and so we'll look at ELL and continue to, and that, additionally, some folks may be thinking about special education services. Special education teachers will be, will be reaching out to their students and helping them access the learning activities as well.
Thanks, Josh.
Director Keating, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Director Heinz. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent. And I don't, and Carla, I just want to extend the same thanks that Director Cobb and Director Bondright have shared about just the tireless work and the effort, the ongoing effort that doesn't really have an end in sight, I think at this point. And the only question I had actually Director Bondright asked around language support. And so, other than that, right now, I don't have any other questions. So, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. I, I think people, you know, for a district of our size, 30,000 students and 5,000 staff, that it is a tremendous undertaking. We have heard from a handful of constituents that are wanting to figure out a way that the community can be more supportive of student learning. And I think that those opportunities will come with time. But the conversations that I've had with the superintendent and with my individual board members, the equity of all students' learning in Tacoma has been and will continue to be a priority. And I just ask that people think about all of the circumstances that families are going through right now, that if your family is in a better position, in a stronger position, then that supplemental learning, that's a great opportunity for you to provide it to your students. But we have families who have housing insecurity, food insecurity, employment insecurity. And I think everybody coming out of this should have a great appreciation for teachers and everything that they do. Because when you get into that delivery from home, it's really challenging. I think you understand what our teachers go through on a daily basis. And so, please, during this transition period, keep all of our 30,000 students in mind and not necessarily just your students, that it is an equity issue and we're going to do the best that we can through the district and through community partners, which includes the public sector and the nonprofit sector to make certain that these families have the support that they need. The one question I had is just in terms of classified and certificated staff, and I know those conversations are ongoing. What guidance have we received from OSPI in terms of apportionment and funding and how we can keep as many people employed and working during these uncertain times?
Our, our guidance about apportionment has, you know, has varied as we've gone along. We've gotten assurances that our, that our state superintendent is really looking at it and that, that it will be considered. The specifics, we do not know, but we certainly have gotten guidance that they want us to keep our, our FTE employed and that we want to have them provide in, being provided with meaningful work. And as Josh and I talked about serving nutritious meals and about our day camps, both mandated by the governor, we are certainly using a variety of our employees to do that work.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I, I think the guidance, you know, just so that the public understands that we have to follow the guidance of OSPI and the United States Department of Education, that it's not optional. And so, when we talk about structuring programs and services by utilizing the guidance, that's just, that's how we do it on a daily basis. I think it's become more in focus during this period of time because the guidance, we're all in uncharted territory. And so, the people at OSPI and US Department of Ed that are providing the guidance are in a position they've never probably spent much time thinking about because this is such an unconventional way to deliver education out through public schools. And I think OSPI, Chris Reichdahl and his team have been very thoughtful and decisive in their decision-making. I think it's a fluid situation. And so, the school district is making, the Tacoma School District is making the best decisions that we can based on the guidance that we receive. And sometimes that guidance is still being developed. And so, we're not in a position to formally roll anything out, but that doesn't mean that there's not any work going on. And the apportionment question, I believe, is important because we don't have unlimited resources. So, we're trying to figure out how to stand up a distant learning program in uncertain times. We've been told to prepare to provide these services to students until, well, it was April 24th, schools are closed until April, Friday, April 24th. So, in theory, we would be going back until April 27th. So, from now until April 27th, but there could be continuing guidelines. We have new, the stay-at-home order that came from the governor, not just a couple of days ago. I think everything is moving so rapidly, we sometimes lose track of time. And I want to make certain that, that apportionment piece and the funding piece that's, that is required for the district to remain financially solvent and able to fund all of these programs, that we need those state and funding, and federal funding sources in order to keep people employed and to keep the services available for students and families. My last question before we move on to the next topic, substitute teachers. That seems, that's one that I've started to wrestle with because it seems challenging. I guess I would be interested to know, how would we even begin to think about placement of substitutes? And how would you pay substitutes? I think we, we have teachers that are going to come back online. So, if they need to take leave, perhaps there would be an opportunity for a substitute, but because that's an operational decision, Superintendent, what are you thinking about?
So, our, our guidance has been really clear. We have a handful and I, I don't have Lisa here next to me, which I usually do, but I think we have a handful of substitutes, maybe 10 to 12, that were serving for teachers that were currently on leave. So, if I am a substitute teacher and I've been in a long-term substitute job and I am serving for a teacher that's on a maternity leave or some other kind of leave, then I'm eligible for pay. I can, you know, stand, and we're asking those teachers to still reach out to the class that they were serving and they will get, you know, the full pay that they were receiving before. If they're a substitute that, you know, that actually goes in only on a, you know, on a basis when there's a teacher that's absent, we are precluded by law and by those same apportionment guidelines to pay them at this time unless they work. Now, right now, we're really working on providing FTE, I mean, providing, you know, ongoing work for our employees that are full-time FTE. And so, that's, that's who we're getting to rotate in on the daycare and rotate in on the, on the nutrition work. Now, if we have a teacher that gets ill and she can't reach out to her class and we need a substitute, then again, we can employ a substitute worker to go in and take the place of a worker. But we do not have a provision in our guidelines that will allow us to pay a substitute. So, you know, we've reached out to those subs. Colette Stewart, who works with our substitutes, sent a letter this week, I believe, that said, hey, we're really sorry, you know, we hear your, you know, we hear that you're in a dilemma and our best guidance to them at this time is to apply for unemployment.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Let's move on to the next item, which I believe is Meals on Wheels?
Day camp is next.
Day camp, all right. Superintendent, is Deputy Superintendent Garcia going to talk about day camps?
Deputy Superintendent Garcia.
All right, Josh, please.
So, I'm, I'm going to roll through our next couple of ones. They're more of just like technical updates around there. So, we have been doing a day camp opportunities for first responders, medical providers in guidance with the governor's proclamation. Partners that helped us develop this framework are MultiCare, CHI, which is the Franciscans, GreenTrick, Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, Banford Foundation, Metro Parks, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and the Tacoma Public Schools. Currently, we're serving over 15 different agencies, first responder agencies, medical provider agencies, and that number grows every day as folks reach out to us and say, hey, we have employees that need help. They let us know and we work to register their families. We have over 100 families in the registration process. It's an online registration. There are some challenges with that, but you know, we're practicing social distancing. And so, we got to help folks through to get the web browsers and then we have a support team that makes phone calls to help sure they, they get into the system. Across the state, we have heard that the need for care has been low and that's partly because of the stay-at-home. People are there. So, we may have 30 kids across a day sometimes that are there and that's okay. Those 30 kids need a spot so their families can continue to serve our community. We serve two and moving into three meals a day. We serve kids ages five through 12 and then next week we'll start a program that allows kids, three, four and five-year-olds, also a younger group of kids to support that. And that's the update around day camp. I'd like to give an update on technology to give you a little bit of preview of that as well, if we're okay. I see a heads nod or two, so I'll just keep going right through there.
Yeah, please.
Around the technology, our data web team has played an amazing job of, you know, standing up a day camp system, the technology, big shout out to legal. There's legal implications, nursing implications. A big thank you to our folks in Nutrition Services, Gina and her team, our custodial staff, Matt and his teams, and working with both Paul Harris and Chris Williams and Steve Graves, PIO. All these things have to come. And then in this social distancing, we really rely on technology to be a communication. So, there is a website, there's an online data system, there's a data dashboard, so I can see who's registered, who's not registered, where are they in the registration process. Those were all built and deployed in less than a week. So, a lot of long hours by a lot of folks to ensure that's there. In the days, right up till the closure, that would have been just for the record, like March 11th and 12th, we closed on, last day was March 13th, I believe, was our last day. We started deploying computers to schools through the laptops to kids' distribution process. So, each of these schools, Foss, Lincoln, Wilson Stadium and Mount DeHoma, 100 kids got laptops in anticipation that they would need to access this. And we really tried to prioritize students that had already online learning opportunities that were in place or seniors. We got an additional 25 computers to Sammy Soda Idea and the Willie Stewart Academy and an additional 50 at Locan, excuse me, Oakland. We have then immediately started to figure out, to prepare ourselves for a distribution at seven of our schools starting on Monday. And where I've identified approximately 3,500 laptops that will be available, that we're going to start to distribute to all grade levels, but we're going to start with seniors and working our way down the grade levels. And we're going to prioritize students enrolled in advanced placement classes. And that's really critical because advanced placement tests are coming up in the next few weeks and those have all been to move to an online by the college board. So, students seeing those computers. So students seen those computers. We're asking families, uh, we're doing surveys to, if you don't need a computer, please don't take a computer. Because there's opportunities um, to um, to create a larger distribution. Early last week, so that would have been like March, I don't know, 15th, 16th. Uh, using our tech levy, we put in an order to um, in our current tech funds. To get in the pipeline for additional uh, 2,000 plus more computers. And this is all in preparation, if we have to go beyond April 24th, we're not waiting to start there. Those uh, computers will help us and would have helped us even if we don't need them um, as we move forward in the future. Um, as regards to remote access, um, we've set up um, over a hundred users with uh. Access of business to the district and continue to work within home. So a lot of folks, even our employees, needed home access just to do business at home. Um, we've enabled remote voicemail access, configured phone lines in the cab services to ring into people's homes or cell phones. So we're trying to use our technology field staff to make sure that we can continue to do business as usual as much as possible. We have reached out to our internet provider companies. Um, and they are also practicing social distancing practice. So there's a lot, a lot of folks going into the field to help families at this time or new customers with internet access. So we recognize there are some, still some challenges. Um, but there are some tremendous opportunities for us as a community to come to think about hotspots that are available around the community. And that will be some of the mapping processes that we go through there. One last update, I believe, for me, um, before we turn it back to Carla, is regarding seniors. Um, the State Board of Education met yesterday, uh, 3:26. And they, um, most of their conversation was, was looking to provide more flexible options. Uh, for school districts to make local decisions. Their next meeting is, I think, April 8th for rulemaking. They're gonna have meetings in between. But they're um, anticipating that they may change some rules. They are the governing body of graduation requirements. And that's why OSPI has, hasn't been able to release some of those rules. They've given us guidance about moving forward, um, anticipating ways that we will need to meet seniors' graduation requirements. Um, and this is all under the understanding that we're coming back to school April 24th. Excuse me, April 27th. Uh, um, but that, that conversation around senior graduation um, requirements will continue to evolve. We put together a team and we looked at our current policies. And um, started to identify within those current policies, what are the flexibilities schools could use to meet students' needs? And we've started to put together a list, um, in case students, uh, our desire is no students negatively impact academically in there. We're currently analyzing the pathways requirements for every senior and doing a gap analysis to determine if waiver, additional waivers are needed. And we're using educ nudity for credit retrieval. And I mentioned how we're prioritizing seniors first with those pieces of computer access. And then we're reaching into our higher education partners and some of the community partners to start to build plans for. Um, we're gonna get through this and you're gonna have a senior year and it may look different. But we also need to be thinking about what happens for you next year. So we have had conversations with some of our higher ed partners to be forward-thinking about those pieces as well. So those are three uh, briefings that we just wanted to share with you. Um, after this week, going into next week, we'll also start to engage our high schools around some of the other. Uh, ceremonial pieces of senior experiences. And when we know a little bit more about how or when we come back. Uh, we'll be able to start to have some plans in place for those experiences as well. So I'm gonna turn it back to the superintendent uh, for the nutrition services.
And actually, uh, before you move on, before we move on to that briefing, I'm gonna pause. And give board members an opportunity to ask questions or comment on uh, the previous briefings. Vice President Cobb, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no, I just expect that um, we'll hear, continue to hear more as the board engages in rulemaking. And with feedback of shore from school board directors, I think that they've set up an opportunity to do that. Um, I appreciate hearing the updates around technology. Um, I think that this is a crisis time, but it just highlights again. Um, issues we talked about in other contexts around funding. And the fact that there isn't an expectation of, of funding technology for every student in the state's funding formula. So I think um, in the community, there happens some expectations expressed that we were able to turn on a dime. With regard to offering a distance learning opportunity. But I think it just, um, these opportunities are opportunities to reinforce the fact that there are some outdated assumptions. In the way that we fund and provide for schools that don't, that don't explicitly call for every student having access to a device. So I appreciate the innovative approaches you've taken to try to think through who should we prioritize and why? As we roll out additional access to computers and that kind of technology. The language, I don't want the message that you expressed, Josh, around if you don't need one, please don't take one. Like in this time, we really need to be um, prioritize, uh, prioritizing getting technology to households that don't have any. Um, I think that's a message that should come through. Um, and then I, again, just appreciate the way that you're working with partners and in the telecommunications industry. And other places to identify resources to get out to our families. So no questions though, but just, those are some of the things that resonate with being good to hear.
Ready, thank you. Director Baumright, any questions or comments?
Well, I'd first like to say I agree with everything uh, Director Cobb said. And so ditto there on the technology and um, all of that. I'd like to sort of commend the, the district for setting up with our community partners, the uh, child day camps. And, and um, also point out that I know that, that it is, we're hoping to, um, at least I'm hoping that we're hoping. To expand out the uh, populations eligible for those to um, others. Once we get this settled and we have a sense of how many first responders and health professionals are gonna need those slots. If there are extra slots, I'd love to, to figure out a way to get um, other low-income um, providers. Who are still working like grocery store um, personnel and pharmacy personnel and others that are keeping our economy going. But can't afford to um, uh, to keep doing that if they don't have childcare. That we keep them in mind, and I know they were listed by the governor as priorities as well. So and I know what, we're just setting this up and just trying to, to get a sense of how many of the nurses and doctors and hospital staff. And first responder staff are gonna need those slots. But um, as this calms down and rolls out, I hope that we're able to fill some, some of those spots for um, some of these other folks. Um, and then also um, I'm curious about the, you sort of threw this in the, adding the three and four-year-olds. And I'm, I'm just sort of curious about how, how we're gonna um, plan on um, having that happen at these sites. Um, and you know, we haven't started that yet, so that's something we could talk about later, unless you have some more details to add on that. In terms of staffing levels are different for three and four-year-olds and et cetera. So I don't know how we're gonna manage that, but maybe with community partners, not quite sure.
Yes, so you just hit it right there. Two great points, and I apologize, is so our community partners have already started to reach out to grocery store. Uh, large agencies and others to start to think about how will we help support their needs? And there's a variety of other folks that are on the list and prioritization. So thank you, um, Director Baumright's been a great thought partner in helping us continue to keep that in the forefront. The early learning, uh, um, the three, four, five-year-olds, the community partners are the ones that are taking the leads on those activities. And they're, um, this is not daycare, this is a day camp experience. And so we have some flexibilities as a community uh, around staffing ratios. Um, we're definitely, all these folks have been background checked, these are safe places. Um, we have health protocols and standards in there to birth tech, both students as well as staff. And so those are really critical that we start small in those steps as well. So um, they're helping us really shape and guide this.
So thanks for that, um, Josh, I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank our community partners and know that, um, I'm really glad to hear that the district is working closely with. Cause we do have a robust childcare in, infrastructure in our community. And it's nice that we're able to capitalize on that and not um, undermine the work that's already been done in that area. So super. And then my last comment is around the seniors. And um, I know how stressful it must be to be a senior and have uh, you know, your senior year truncated. And um, topsy-turvy, um, but no, I think that was a fabulous insight to say that um, that we're looking each individual senior. One by one as to what their needs are and making sure that they have a pathway to success. And I'm um, super thrilled to hear that. So thank you for that.
Ready, thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
Um, no, Director Cobb and Director Baumright uh, touched on the things that I were, I was thinking about in terms of technology and access. Um, and I know um, that all four of us directors have been on multiple phone calls with local elected officials. As well as state directors to try and um, collaborate and get best information. And how do we help support um, all of us through this time? So um, again, just grateful for the, and the effort that's going in to try and supply. Um, or create access, internet access and technology access for our students. So, thank you.
Ready, thank you. Uh, and I would piggyback on Director Keating's comments to say that on those calls we've been on. I don't think anybody has it absolutely figured out. And it gives me confidence in what we're doing based on, uh, in terms of where we're having challenges. I hear that from colleagues in other districts and where we're finding success and we're learning from one another. So as we become aware of something that's working in a neighboring district. We're, we're looking to see if that's something that we might be able to implement in Tacoma. Um, and this isn't a competition, right? We are all in this together. And uh, you hear the myriad of people that are working on the variety of pieces to make all of this operational. Uh, I do appreciate with the day camp, the partnership. You know, this school district has transformed over the last nine years because of partnership. And we're only gonna get through this public health crisis together through partnership. And I think there's a lot of wisdom in the way that these day camps were set up. Both in terms, uh, you know, there's this belief that school districts offer childcare. Well, we provide space, but uh, that's almost always then the result of the partnership. Where the actual care is provided through the YMCA or Boys and Girls Clubs or other, or other care providers. Uh, and so I think uh, leveraging their subject matter expertise was a smart decision. I also think that um, trying to be mindful of people that are trying to stay in business, that are trying to keep their businesses running. And people employed, uh, that have that subject matter expertise. So I, I really appreciate the thoughtful way that the day campus have come together. Um, particularly since it was not an option, it was an order from the governor. Uh, I, I think in a, a short amount of time, it's come together and we'll continue to learn and expand. Um, and so thank you, uh, Dr. Garcia. I know you are the one that has been delegated to lead that effort on behalf of the school district. So thankful, uh, I'm thankful for the thoughtful way that you put that together. Uh, with respect to-
It's not a day, definitely, definitely not a Dr. Garcia, Tammy Campbell and a variety of other folks, Michelle Raw Lewis. So I just would hate for the big shout out, so as long as we say Dr. Garcia and the big umbrella of. Um, a lot of amazing folks working long hours and community partners. I'll take their glory this time for them and pass it along.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for the, for recognizing those folks. Um, with respect to internet access, uh, I know that there has been efforts made with Comcast and Click and other providers. Uh, and it seems like that responsibility in somewhat, in some ways has defaulted to the school district. But really, I see this more as a, a community need. And I think it just shows, uh, it, it amplifies the problem that most of these families that are experiencing. Uh, that don't have access to internet now, they don't have access to the internet in good times, right? We have these gaps and I, I wonder if uh, if there's any effort underway through uh, cellphone companies. To reach out to their customers to provide hotspots through their phone. Because I know that installation of cable and the access to cable has been a problem. And it seems like there may be an opportunity through a, a private partner, a T-Mobile or a Verizon. To reach to customers to offer that rather than the school district only having to solve that. Have we thought about turning cell, trying to advocate for cellphones turning on to hotspots through their provider?
Yes, so we've uh, we've explored all kinds of several options. And so this is actually our ask for you folks, I, and your roles with uh, school board members. Um, your roles on the EOC, you, I think I hit it best, President Heinz is, um. Internet access is not a uh, typical function of the school districts. And we need some help if we're going to continue down this road. And it has, it's gonna come from a community solution um, in there. And so um, our ask is, is can we bring this and surface this to the Pierce County EOC team? Um, and the policymakers to think about, how can we come together as a community? To prioritize school-aged children having internet access?
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Um, and lastly, when we're talking about the protections of staff and student, particularly at day camp. And as we've been standing this, these up, I've been thinking about, you've got these, these heroes, these families who are out there. First responders and healthcare workers on the front line, whose children then may be at greater risk. Because their parents are in these professions where they're out there interacting with folks that may have contracted or been exposed to the virus. Uh, on the staffing side, can you talk about some of the uh, ways that if, if staff feel like they may be. If they may not be well, if they may be in a category that could compromise, you know, age or a pre-existing health condition. How are we, I don't think we're requiring staffs to show up or else. Can you give us a high level of what a staff member can do if they feel like they, they might not be in the safest working condition?
I was gonna add a section uh, right after um, I talked about nutrition services. Just to talk about, uh, Lisa did a good overview of our labor issues. And so I will make sure that um, I, I, I want to give you a big picture of what's going on with labor. And I'll, I'll add, um, you, you'll get additional detail from Lisa in a memo that goes out later, but I'll give you an overview.
Okay, thank you. That would be helpful. And uh, Superintendent Santorino, let's transition now to your next briefing.
Sure. Um, the, everything that has to do with nutrition services is really a good news story. Um, the main thing I want to emphasize is before the governor mandated that we feed students, uh, Tacoma was already doing that. Uh, we were, uh, I think we were first on the list to have um, actual uh, exposures to the coronavirus in schools. Right away, so with our exposures at Lion and um, Sheridan and uh, Lowell. We started feeding, when we closed those schools, we started feeding students the very, you know, the very next day. And so um, we have continued then to provide uh, meals. It was our nutrition department that determined that they actually could put a meal, a breakfast and a lunch in one bag. So that it would take care of a student for lunch that day and then um, breakfast the next day. Um, it has grown pretty uh, at a, an increasing rate. Um, a, a big thank you to all the nutrition workers that are just uh, putting in long hours. Uh, to Paul Harris, who is in charge of the uh, food distribution. To Chris Williams, who's making uh, sure that the problems go away and taking care of it. And our uh, representative, our union president, um, Gina, who is really working so hard. To make sure that we have a good partnership. Uh, just to give you an indication, March 16th, that first day, we served 989 students. And so with a breakfast and a lunch, that was nineteen, 1,978 meals. And then on the 25th, March 25th, we served 5,982 students. Which is a combination of 11,964 meals. So it is unbelievable. And uh, in our emergency management meeting, we have been talking about, so what do we do as this grows? Because as more people feel the effects of not having a job. And uh, you know, not being able to, you know, having groceries be one of those things that becomes an issue that it's not today. We're gonna find more students, I believe, in that line. So um, the Tacoma Public Schools Nutrition Services has been totally dedicated to make sure that we have um. Our, our kids having access to a high-quality uh, safe meal. Uh, I know at this time, Josh is working on adding um, you know, other avenues, but we are totally working. It was Chris that went to the, Chris and Paul that went to the USDA and said, hey, can we give two meals in one bag? And got permission to do that. So they're thinking out of the box, trying to provide. Chris is also, you know, we started with the 10 middle school sites as a place for students to go and get meals. And then we found that there were some students that weren't able to get to those middle school sites. And so that's when Meals on Wheels was designed. And now we have um, you know, we have uh, we have bus, buses on, I can't remember. I think it's like 36 routes uh, delivering um, food. And now we have, you know, we have, we have buses on, I can't remember, I think it's like 36 routes delivering food to students. The meals are served in a, are subject to specific sanitary and precautionary measures to avoid food contamination and spoilage. Preparing and serving SAC meals are in a way that we can get reimbursement for those meals. And we've been really careful about the social distancing and all those things. And, you know, we're in unprecedented times. And so we are really trying to work together to make sure, you know, that this works for our kids. I am, I am really proud that we're able to provide such a basic service to our students. The meals are distributed between 10 and noon on Monday through Friday. They're served outside of the building in the bus loading zone. All children 18 years and younger can get a meal. Parents can drive or walk up and staff will greet the parent six feet away and ask them how many meals they'd like and if they want white or chocolate milk. And they're to be consumed off of school premises. We've also had to, we've used our safety and security personnel. They're assigned to all the meal distribution sites and they wear their assigned uniforms so that people know that they can help with the safety and security. We've had lots of partners that are also committed to providing our community with food. It's been an outstanding effort. So there's been congregations and different entities that have worked with us. And we're, you know, we are trying to keep the sites, the school sites to providing these lunch meals. But for example, St. Leo's will be at seven of the 10 meal distribution sites on Fridays at 10, with 10, excuse me, at 10 o'clock, with a weekend food bag for families. And then also on Monday, March 30th, St. Leo's is going to be there with just bags of groceries as part of their break bag program, designed to provide food assistance to families over spring, winter and Thanksgiving break. So that's part of the cool thing about living in Tacoma is that communities find ways to help. We've gotten a lot of people who have called and said they want to volunteer, you know, to help distribute bags and work out. And so I just want to make it clear that that's part of the discussion I talked about, Director Heinz, about, about our labor, is we want to provide as many opportunities for our labor force to qualify, you know, to be paid as FTE and working. And so we're making sure that, that they can take care of those labor issues. And so our team has rallied and we are grateful that we've had these good labor partnerships with our folks so that they can make sure that they're contributing to our work. So just a couple of, a couple of points of information. Our, our security workers, we've had security officers at work, bus drivers at work, our school nutrition folks at work. We've had teachers that have come and helped with this. We have people, parents and teachers doing childcare and also the day camps and also working side by side. Our nutrition service workers have prepared, packed and handed out meals for children since schools close. Our custodians have jumped in for deep cleaning at schools where we've had the coronavirus cases come up. And since the closures, custodians have continued to clean and button up their schools and staff at 10 regional meal distribution sites. And in the coming weeks, they will continue to serve at our day camp sites. Bus drivers are shuffling meals for students to neighborhoods throughout the district. Our PT staff teams, professional technical staff teams have shifted to remotely supporting multiple daily virtual meetings and remote websites. And let me tell you, they've had to support because some of us did not have a clue on how to do a remote meeting. And we have totally learned where we're getting to be officials. Our office professionals are supporting day camps and responded as needed. Our nurses are saving, serving at the day camps. And they're set up for the children and they're also scanning and testing the students as they come in. So it's been an amazing work. We have made, been real clear with our employees that if you are sick, stay home and let, you know, we're, we're doing the workers in, I can't think of the word all of a sudden, but, you know, they're going in, in different threads. So you may work this week one and then you don't work week two or week three. Or you might work week two and you don't work week three and work four. So we, you know, we have them scattered through these different routines. And at any time, if you feel sick or if you are already in one of the high-risk categories that the governor has outlined, then you just have to let your human resources person know or your supervisor know and you're not, you won't be expected to come to work. So I am very proud of Lisa and the human resources crew and how sensitive they have been to, you know, the work needs of our labor force and trying to take care of them. And again, we couldn't have done this without a tight partnership with our labor partners. They've been pretty easy to work with along the way.
Thank you, Carla. And before I take comments, other board members, I just want to clarify when you said that we're scanning and testing students that come into day camps, we're not testing them for COVID-19. We're taking tests and those sorts of- Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we're not-
Yeah, no. We're not giving tests. We're scanning for tests and making sure that you're not sick when you walk in. Exactly.
And we're doing that for staff and students.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry about that.
Vice President Cobb, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, just one comment about, well, again, I'm not sharing the flow, so I'll just say my comment. It kind of relates to health and safety. I appreciate the priority that you all have placed on it because it seems like the paramount thing that we should be focusing on, the physical health and safety of students and staff who are coming into these day camps and then the distribution of meals. And then just as a broader statement about health and safety, I think we started this conversation off talking about the changes that are going to roll out on Monday with regard to ramped up focus on the academics. But in general, I think that that focus should be balanced with an overall focus on health and wellness through this time. So I really feel strongly that if, as a community, we focus on making sure that students are happy, are safe, are engaged in some kind of activities during the day. They don't have to be specifically on math standards for eighth graders. But the more we can do to focus on their mental health and wellness during this time and their physical health and wellness, the stronger they'll be when we're ready to open the doors of the schools back up. So I just encourage parents out there who are feeling anxious about this time of learning loss, like it's happening across the state, happening across the country, there's going to be, have to be some systematic way that we approach filling those gaps. But just lean in on making sure that your kids feel safe, secure and engaged in something that they like. So I just want to say that as we talk about health and physical health and safety precautions that we're taking to make sure that those who are coming together are safe. We think more broadly too about how we continue the messages that I really appreciated coming out from the whole child team about students' mental health and wellness, so continue to send those. I think just leaning in in that regard is a really positive place to be to balance that with continued learning.
We want those lines of work that for our, for elementary, middle and high school to also look at social emotional learning. Because you're right, you know, different students, different children react to, you know, this kind of news and work in a different, in a different place. My grandson called me at like midnight last night and just wanted to make sure I was okay. So, you know, you forget about the impact on our kids and, you know, about how they need to be reassured. So thank you, Director Cobb. That's important.
Yeah, Vice President Cobb, I would just echo that, that, you know, as I've been talking with people, I've described it as Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that we're on that base level right now, that people need to make certain that they are, that they are fed and housed and that they feel safe. And that if we can build upon that platform, then that's, that's great. But I will remind people that we are in a proclaimed state of emergency in the city of Tacoma, a proclaimed state of emergency in Pierce County, a proclaimed state of emergency in the state of Washington and a nationally declared emergency. And so things are going to be different and we can figure out how to catch up on education over time. But, but right now, we really have to make certain that, that staff and students and families are safe and well and focused on mental and physical health. And so thank you for, for raising that point. I think it's a very wise statement to be making. Director Baumright, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I have, I have multiple comments on, one of them is on what Director Cobb had brought up. Because I think we, as just as this crisis crested for us here, we had just finished up these conversations at all the middle schools and high schools around mental health. And anxiety was a huge component and they came up with some great ideas. So I just wanted to make sure that all those wonderful students who took the time to speak with us and the counselors that also were part of that process, have no fear. We are, we heard you and we are going to take what, what we learned from you and, and also get more information from this experience and bring that back when we get to a little bit more normal situation to talk about how we can make some policies that'll help, help your mental health. So I just want to make sure that folks feel that all that work wasn't, wasn't thrown out the window. We've been mulling it over and thinking about it. And actually, it brought a question up for me about the counselors. And so I don't know, Superintendent, whether or not the counselors are available to students that, you know, at this point in time, the psychologists, the nurses, the, you know, the group that these kids would normally touch base with about their emotional state of mind. And so what's the scoop with that? Do they have access? Are they available or is that?
The counselors are, the counselors are actively working. They have caseloads of students, so they know students and they can anticipate some of the students that are, you know, having difficulties. The principal's tomorrow and they, for today, they're doing it today when they meet, will also reach out to the counselors that they could be accessible as parents get these learning frameworks and work with that. And we want our counselors to be available as, you know, as they can be to provide support to parents that need, feel like their students need support, need help.
Perfect, thanks. And then the, the other thing I wanted to say was just a gratitude to the nutrition team. And it's been pretty amazing to watch that grow. And I know that it seems to be, that keeps evolving. And, and so I know that a lot of parents were asking too about the packets, the instructional packets that were also available at those 10 sites. That's correct. We talked about that earlier. And just to, to know that I guess we're trying to figure out ways to broaden the distribution of that, but at least we've got those 10 sites, correct?
Yes. Yes, okay. They're at the sites and, you know, Marie Verhar, they are looking at some specific ways to perhaps add to the distribution, you know, in a, in a safe way. The thing is, we can control it at the distribution sites and make sure that they're delivered safely. We want to make sure we can do that at any other site.
Yeah, and I, and I know that I'd heard earlier that there are like 112 bus stops that they're going to. And there's no room on the bus with the food to add the packets to because there's, the packets take up so much space. So that's why they're not getting out to those same 112 bus stops. So, okay, thanks. That's, that's it for me.
Ready, thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
Um, I don't think I have any questions. It's a lot of information. I, my comments are, I'm really grateful, Carla and Josh for, and the team to allow us to be in this space right now. Because we've been remotely communicating individually for so long that it all just kind of becomes one, like, like mesh of a conversation. So for me, I'm just really grateful to be all in one space together and also provide such critical information to the public. So, and I know, like, well, I don't know, but I imagine that you're, you and your team are quite exhausted at this point. So I just want to acknowledge the continued effort. And I, it's been, the PIO office has done such a wonderful job in uplifting, having uplifting messages. And the information that's coming out is just so, I see a lot of families are relying on it and using it and sharing it. And it just brings me hope to see these really positive videos and messages. So I just am really grateful for that because I believe the mental health piece is going to be, continue to grow and be an issue as we are all more isolated from one another. So I think that that's really important. And I know there's a lot of resources I see community members sharing and families sharing that are really targeted at elementary school aged students. And I just want to extend that our, you know, middle school and high school students equally need some of the same supports and maybe just a hug, right? If, you know, from their family members, you know, my, my teenager's acting a little more toddlerish on some, some days. So, and I think it's just like everything's so out of alignment. And so I think that I'm really just inspired by the community and by all the work that's being done collectively. So I just want to say again, an eternal thank you for everything that each of us and everyone is doing right now.
Building sense of strong structure because we wouldn't do it if we didn't have that good base behind us. So thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a question on cleaning supplies and products. How are we? It seems like, you know, with this rush on grocery stores and everybody's buying toilet paper and hand sanitizer, how is the district faring in terms of what we need to keep these facilities safe and clean?
We haven't, at our EOC meeting, we haven't talked recently about the supplies. We know it's not going to be, you know, forever and ever. We certainly have been, been investigating additional sources and trying to find additional ways. I know we've had good contributions. I don't know, Josh, do you know more than I do about where we are?
I don't know if I know any more than you do, but I would just offer that one of the gifts that we had is when schools closed, we weren't having to use as much, right? So some schools are completely closed and we continue to keep them maintained and up to speed, but we're not having to use the same level of cleaning supplies. So that allows us to redistribute. We've been working with some of our partners and we put in a request to the city of Tacoma and Pierce County. They unfortunately don't have the supplies either. Metro Parks came in and did a big donation for our day camps with cleaning supplies on a Sunday to make sure each classroom had additional supplies. And so we seem to, like everyone else, be in the spirit of collaboration and not taking too much and having just enough, but always being on that teetering spot of never having that assurance that we'll have enough.
Okay, I have a question back to our online learning platforms. Are there, we're, I think, if not officially, unofficially, a Microsoft district. We've spent, we've made the investment into Office 365 and those resources. Are those the, and we're on Microsoft Teams today to make this call possible, are those the platforms? I know Zoom seems to be popular as well. As we're getting inquiries from, from people in the community about how we're using technology, is it Microsoft-focused or can you provide a little more detail on what sort of technology platforms we're using and teachers will use and the reasons for why they can and cannot use some of the different platforms?
Yeah, so a part of our policies and procedures is we are using Microsoft Office 365. Kids can use Teams, staff can use Teams. We do allow some additional flexibility for staff to use Zoom as a platform. But for security, what's the cybersecurity reasons? We have made sure that what we currently use is in alignment to our current protocols and procedures. We don't videotape students through Teams yet in their discussions, like we are doing right now for their safety and security. But there may be some needs as we move into online assessments where we might have to do that at an individual student level. Data security, student privacy, cybersecurity is still a very critical lens that we look through all of our platforms. And so Microsoft Office 365 is our approved model at this point for students and staff. And student, or excuse me, staff can use Zoom to communicate through meetings as well.
Okay, thank you. And for all of the community members that are reaching out that want to be a part of the solution, I know that the board has heard from a few folks that have talked about, hey, I've got- hey, I've got access to this technology, I work for this company, I've got some bandwidth to do things. I think that there's, I think this outreach is coming from a place of wanting to help. What's the best way to channel folks that are looking to get engaged? What's helpful, uh, to the district and, and what are some cautions around just bandwidth of the district? Cause I appreciate people that want to get involved. I try to temper that with all of the work that's going on internally. What's the best way for, how, how would you recommend Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent that people that feel like they have solutions engage with the district?
Um, you know, we, we, we are open to, um, ideas that the public have. We can't implement all of them. Uh, we can only put, you know, we can only, you know, again, uh, we're often looking at each other saying, we've been out of school for two weeks. So, you know, we can't put all these platforms in place. Uh, we're, we're interested in hearing ideas. Please know that because, you know, if, if we have not implemented them, it's because we just are still trying to get, um, you know, some things in, in place. Amanda Scott Thomas is a good person to get ahold of. If you've got, you know, we've gotten some good leads for like St. Leo's and other places that have said, hey, we can give out these kinds of supplies. We want our families to have as much access to, uh, you know, to food and to school supplies and things that they have. And, um, board members, you have been good conduits to letting us know, uh, what people are offering. Uh, Director Keating has let us know about a group that's putting together some masks and things like that. And so if you're just patient with us and, um, get the information to us and know that if we don't, um, act on it right away, it's just, it, it's because our, um, we're peddling as fast as we can and we're trying to get things that we can sustain over time. And the other thing is the further we go out, that's the other thing is that, you know, we're looking at a six-week closure as we know it now. If that guidance changes and we know we're going to be out longer than six weeks, then we'll start to expand our vision of what we want to accomplish.
And I appreciate that clarification. And I think, you know, and we've all alluded to it, that this is unfolding so quickly and it's easy to lose track of days. And I was reminded, hey, it was two days ago that the governor told us to stay at home and it was Wednesday when it formally went into place, right? So we're, um, you know, and I've been cautioning people, this is an ultra marathon. We're in this for the long haul. Um, I do appreciate, uh, the regular communication, uh, Carla, between you and the board that I know, uh, individual board members are communicating with one another on a daily basis, that we're communicating with you and your team individually on a daily basis, that we're in conversation with other elected officials in Tacoma, Pierce County, statewide. Uh, and, and that's not just school board, that city council members, county council members, parks board, court commissioners, that we're all staying connected to understand what one another's doing so we can determine how to best support one another and to amplify messages of things that are happening out in the community. Um, I do appreciate, and I think sometimes it, it, the community may not understand the rationale, but your focus on those orders that were, uh, given by the governor, those were not, hey, uh, this is a suggestion. Those were school districts will provide meals and day camps and those day camps will be prioritized for children of first responders and healthcare workers. Um, I think you did that in record time to a high level. So not only were we quick to implement those priorities as identified by the governor, that they were done at a very high level. I think, uh, expanded learning opportunities was the other directive that came from the governor and OSBI initially. And we put those pieces in place. In fact, I was at a meeting a couple of Fridays ago, uh, that was all 15 public school districts in Pierce County. And people were marveling at how quickly we had been able to put together, you and your team had been able to put together those, uh, supplemental learning materials, PDF in multiple languages available online. Uh, a number of folks were saying, we're going to steal those from you. And we said, go ahead, that, you know, it's intended, we want to support student learning throughout the county and the state, whoever could benefit from it. I think we're now moving into a different phase under new guidance with OSBI that has changed that expectation beginning March 30th, that we are going to be, uh, a little more specific in terms now of how teachers and our certificated, yeah, certified staff are going to be engaging with students and in support of students. Uh, that Monday begins the process and that it's a learning opportunity for teachers that are accustomed to having face-to-face interaction with students. They're having to figure out how to interact with them remotely. I know that my three kiddos have gotten calls from teachers over the last few days just checking in with them and building and reestablishing that connection. So I anticipate that the rollout Monday, um, will be measured and that we're going to learn as we continue to go on, that we're marching towards that April 26th. So right now, the school district has been directed to provide expanded learning opportunities and now more focused learning opportunities, but the guidance is until April 26th. And so, um, I appreciate the pace at which you are rolling out these initiatives because we, we have to meet the guidance with the expectation now that we're going back to April 26th. We can't have our limited time and staff and resources focused on, what if we go back in May, what if we go back in June, what if we go back in September? We got to keep our, our focus on the immediate and that is this new expanded opportunity on the 30th until April 26th. Uh, I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to provide any last thoughts or comments that they have before we bring the study session to a close. Vice President Cobb, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to, um, emphasize one point that you made. Like people say sometimes, like, how does a fish describe what it feels like to be wet kind of thing? And I just point to the examples, like when you're in the public, um, and you're not involved in all these one-on-one conversations that get had. Like if you are just, um, anyone out there and you see the map of the county level map that shows all the food distribution sites across school districts, you just don't think that what it took to make that map come together. But there's no infrastructure for that. There's no 15 school districts of Pierce County, like group that brings us all together and has all of our data. It took someone having the idea and all 15 districts being willing to provide input, the data, and then the county making it happen. So there's just, that's just a tiny, tiny little example of uh, artifact of the collaboration that not everyone knows that's happening behind the scenes and goes into making even such a little thing like a map of all the food sites come together. So I think that a lot of the work that you've described related to child nutrition, getting these day camps up and running, making sure there's, um, enough cleaning supplies where they need to be. There's no infrastructure built for you all to do all this work. So I just, we can't say enough, and we've already said it a thousand times, like how fortunate we are to be in Tacoma, how fortunate we are to have a spirit of collaboration and partnership be the way that we get to engage in this work and to have competent leadership who is willing to reach out and who has partners and who is thinking about not only addressing the needs right in front of us, but what we need to be planning for in the long haul. And then even, I'm sure you're already thinking about how we use some of these tools more when we get back to normal. So I just appreciate the work that you've put in and just appreciate, um, my colleagues on the board who are having all those one-on-one conversations amongst ourselves and our partners at the city and the county, Metro Parks, the port, um, and just, um, the continued collaboration moving this forward.
Thank you. Director Baumright, any closing comments?
Well, I think Director Cobb said it, said it best. I'll just end with, I hope that everyone's, um, follows social protocol, distancing, stay home. Um, really make it easier on those first responders and folks not to have to, have to, you know, reach out and touch too many people that aren't sick. Um, and we hope to see you all soon back in the norm. But until then, just stay at home and know that your school district is working, um, full bore to, to get those, to get with your kids what they need. And, um, and we're all here for you and for, uh, for the kid, for the students. So thanks and stay healthy and stay strong.
Thank you. Director Keating, any closing comments?
Um, I just, I, uh, echo everything that has already been said. And Director Cobb, um, I really appreciate the acknowledgement and just pointing out that none of this was, like, this is all being created as we're flying, right? The plane is literally being built in flight. So I just think that that in times of frustration is really important, um, to just take a breath and remember that none of us have done this. Um, and it's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be smooth. So, um, I think that the community has just been exceptional about, um, extending that grace and understanding. And, um, so I, we're, you know, we're, we're in this for a while. So I think that's really important. Um, so that's, that's it. Thank you.
Righty, thank you. Um, and I would echo the, the sentiments of my colleagues. I, I think that we are in, um, every day is something different. Uh, I appreciate that we have a district that is really trying to actively solve these issues. Um, I understand, you know, we've heard from some constituents, uh, in, in their messages, I read, uh, some concern and some anxiety and, and, you know, this uncertainty I think is tough for all of us. Um, I will also note that we've received a couple of messages recently of thanks, uh, which goes a long way, um, that as elected officials, as public officials, you know, we sign up to be, uh, in the hot seat and to be responsible. But boy, when you get those messages of thanks, it sure goes a long way, especially knowing the hours that we've all been keeping early mornings and late nights. So, uh, I just want to extend my gratitude for the people that have reached out to thank us and the district and the team for everything that's going on, because it does mean a lot. Uh, Tacoma schools, while our buildings are not formally open, the district is still operational. Uh, as evidenced by this study session today, we are on, um, scheduled to have a business meeting April 9th. So that I believe has been noticed or will be noticed, uh, shortly. Uh, there are some guidelines under what sort of business can be conducted that have come through the Attorney General's office and that have also, uh, some guidance that have come through, uh, the governor and OSBI. Uh, so we are working to make certain that that meeting on April 9th is in accordance with those guidelines. Um, it will be a remote meeting. Uh, we're working to figure out how the public comment will work. Uh, the Tacoma City Council held a virtual city council meeting Tuesday night and so we're trying to glean as much as we can from their experience. Uh, we want to abide by Open Public Meetings Act and continue to engage the public in a meaningful way. Um, nobody in Tacoma has ever done a virtual business meeting with public comment before. So we've got a couple of weeks to try and figure this out. Uh, we're going to do it to the best of our ability. We're going to learn as we go on, uh, but know that we're working on those issues and we're going to continue to function as a school district, uh, because there are things that, that need to get done. Um, one of the things that I know will be on the April 9th, or that I anticipate will be on the April 9th, uh, uh, business meeting agenda is some, uh, formal work we need to do around the bond. So I think we probably forgot that, oh yeah, we had an election in February that almost 69% of Tacoma voters approved the capital bond, that we have new large and small projects, uh, that need to get on a timeline. And so there will be, uh, a need for us to adopt a resolution on April 9th, uh, so that the bond process can move forward so that we can continue to plan for construction. Um, and so I don't want there to be any confusion. I know there was some guidance passed along that said, construction projects right now in school districts need to suspend, but there are some administrative things that we'll need to undertake on April 9th and there'll be some other essential business that'll happen on April 9th and as we move forward. So we'll do our best to, to notice that out to the public and to figure out how we keep everybody involved. Uh, and for my board members, for your calendars, please plan on a regular business meeting on April 9th to occur at 6:00 PM. Uh, Vice President Cobb and I will go through the normal agenda setting process with the superintendent. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, our first, first virtual meeting is in the books. Uh, big thanks to Kevin and Tom especially, the technological gurus behind the scenes that make this all work. And thank you to Tanya for, uh, herding us cats and making certain that all of our technology would work. And Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, thank you for your leadership and, uh, appreciate all your hard work. And I know that we're going to get through this together. Uh, I'll be the channel Dan Vopel, hashtag Tacoma, we got this. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.